Well, you still get the thrill. It's like that "Eyes" Jermaine Stewart song.
The one that says that you can still have fun with your clothes on?
Exactly. Oh my God, Jermaine Stewart was so wrong.
Well, security camera footage from Excalibur from Lincoln in the casino.
And not blush. Don't blush while you're doing it.
Well, what would you like me to say?
I'd just like to say, okay, let me read this. How's this? Came from Board of Education presents this certificate to Emily DiMelio in recognition for your outstanding achievement and being selected by the National Association for Music Education in 2013 as a member of the All-National Honor Concert Band and performing at a gala concert in Nashville, Tennessee. Thank you for your dedication and effort. And I don't think I have to say too much about the peak of the pyramid when you go to a national level to be performing. I think it's exceptional for you, your family, and certainly for this school system. So I thank you for all your efforts. I hope you stay in peace. We have another recognition.
We do. I'd like to have Speech and Debate recognized tonight. I'm just going to read an excerpt. As we all know, Speech and Debate was state champions last year. They were state champions. Recognition there. But on top of that, they were able to compete nationally and did an outstanding job. They were actually recognized as the 82nd district out of 3,000 nationally in their competition. What an honor. Represented Canfield outstandingly. Really appreciate that. Mr. Hamilton, you want to touch on anything there on top of that, on what the kids went through last year to gain this achievement?
Sure.
And just your experience with them? I know it was outstanding.
Well, we have a great organization and we thank the school district, the administration, and the Board of Education for your support with that. This year, we have 87 team members right now. It's a large group. We won our first four regular season tournaments and it's just piggybacking off an excellent year last year. We won our first eight regular season tournaments last season. We were state champions. We had a number of students earn high recognition, including having two individual state champions. And it's just a product of years and years of success. And here with us tonight are some of our team officers and the students who've really set that bar high for the next group of seniors and juniors and sophomores and freshmen. So it's just a pleasure to work with these young men and women. They've risen to the top, being 82nd in the nation is impressive and first in the state. So it's an honor to work with them. I have a great time doing so and they represent Canfield very well. Thank you.
We have a resolution on the part of the board. It says all the normal stuff. But down here, it says, "Resolved that the members of the Canfield High School Speech and Debate Team have been taught the vital life skills of communication, analysis, leadership, organization, and fair play and are to be commended for this outstanding achievement and that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes," et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Working with the kids and the achievements. Jermaine, since it's about the kids, do you mind introducing?
I was just going to say, I would love to know who's with us.
So let's have all the speech team members who are here stand up. And if you want to come to the front, then I can recognize all of you for your efforts. So everybody, speech and debate. Speech first and debate second.
Good job.
Okay, so as we go through the list here, we'll start on this end. This is Senior Dominique Farr. She competes in humor. Senior Sarah Lidle in Lincoln Douglas Debate. Senior and team president Julie Gemmell, Public Forum Debate. Rayan Atway, her Public Forum Debate Partner. Lindsay Heldra, a senior in Lincoln Douglas Debate. Angela Papino, a senior in impromptu speaking. Alyssa Karinski, a junior in Lincoln Douglas Debate. Richie Abel, a senior in international extent. And Kevin Min, a senior in Lincoln, uh, Public Forum now Debate, I'm sorry there. So these fine young men and women are some of the team leaders. If you're a team officer, can you step forward? These are the ones who were elected by their peers as team officers as well. So they've done an excellent job. We're off to a great start. We're setting our sights on another state championship. So if you could give them a round of applause.
Mr. Hamilton, last year, you took on the entire state, everybody in the state. Are there divisions this year or is it stoked one division?
There are no tiers. It's just everybody against everybody.
No, there are tiers, but they're from other people.
That is true. That is true. I like the pun. Wow, that's good.
He thought about that all day.
Actually, it was three days ago. All right, in continuing our recognition, I would like to ask Mr. Kessner, who does such a beautiful job of reading student resolutions. If he do so, reading 34 resolutions.
The National Forensic League, number 16-2014, whereas the Canfield High School Speech and Debate Team were ranked in the top 100 schools in the nation by the NFL, National Forensic League.
Thank you.
For the 2012-2013 academic year. And whereas the Canfield High School Speech and Debate Team ranked 82 out of more than 3,000 schools nationwide. And we're going to do this concurrently. So at the end, I'll throw a little thing in there. That's where I'll be going. And whereas Dom Crandall was named First Team All AAC and was AAC Tournament Champion and was district qualifier in Boys Golf. And whereas Janie Rapith was First Team All AAC in Volleyball and was sectional champ. And whereas Rachel Rapith was First Team All AAC in Volleyball and was sectional champ. Whereas Penn Sanciola was named First Team All AAC and was a state qualifier in Girls Tennis. And whereas Ashley Cleo was named First Team All AAC and was a state qualifier in Girls Tennis. And whereas Tara Elhague was named First Team All AAC in Girls Tennis. Whereas Devon Foley was named First Team All AAC in Girls Cross Country. Whereas Rachel Markfuehl was named First Team All AAC in Girls Cross Country. Whereas Anna Longo was named First Team All AAC in Girls Cross Country. Whereas Jenny McClean was named First Team All AAC in Girls Cross Country. Whereas Alec Kennedy was named First Team All AAC in Boys Cross Country and was a regional qualifier. Whereas Tyler Kennedy was named First Team All AAC in Boys Cross Country. Whereas Chase Curran was named First Team All AAC in Boys Cross Country. Whereas Roland Bresson was named First Team All AAC in Boys Cross Country. Whereas Frank Phillips was named First Team All AAC in Boys Soccer. Whereas Brady Clark was named First Team All AAC in Boys Soccer. Whereas the Canfield High School Boys Soccer Team was named District Champions. And whereas the Boys Soccer Team had displayed good sportsmanship in addition to outstanding athletic ability throughout the 2013-2014 season. Whereas Bailey Fisher is named First Team All AAC in Girls Soccer. Whereas Sophia Mancine was named First Team All AAC in Girls Soccer. Whereas Emma Sager was named First Team All AAC in Girls Soccer. Whereas Cheyenne Story was named First Team All AAC in Girls Soccer. Whereas Paige Benignata was named First Team All AAC in Girls Soccer. Whereas the Canfield High School Girls Soccer Team was named AAC Champions, District Champions, and Regional Finalists. And whereas the Girls Soccer Team has displayed good sportsmanship in addition to outstanding athletic ability throughout the 2013-14 season. Whereas Kimmy O'Kane was named First Team All AAC in Football. Alec Bishenek was named First Team All AAC in Football. Jacob Isarko was named First Team All AAC in Football. Whereas Cameron Tarraschotti is named First Team All AAC in Football. Whereas Jordan Brown was named First Team All AAC in Football. Whereas Christina Cooper is named First Team All AAC in Girls Golf. Michelle Whiteley was named First Team All AAC in Girls Golf. Whereas Olivia DiMartino was named First Team All AAC in Girls Golf. Whereas Cara Loomis was named First Team All AAC in Girls Golf. And whereas the Canfield High School Girls Golf Team was named AAC Champions and were state qualifiers. And whereas the Girls Golf Team has displayed good sportsmanship in addition to outstanding athletic ability throughout the 2013-14 season. Therefore, be resolved that the Canfield High School, the aforementioned teams and players were to be commended for these outstanding accomplishments and that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the Canfield Board of Education and the copies be presented to them. It's official. It's in the books.
I think all of these resolutions certainly just show the tip of the iceberg and all the parental support that goes into this, the community support, the hard work of all of the athletes and Speech and Debate, everything, the time and effort that goes into these. And we are very proud as a Board of Education to be part of this system. So all of you, thank you very much for your efforts. It's wonderful to have this level of success in our school systems. Thank you. And to the coaches who are here too, all the, you're not a coach, are you? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson, can I make a motion?
Sure, please.
To approve all the recognitions that have been read, the resolutions?
We have a second to that motion. Any additional discussion, comments?
I'll tell you what, three pages, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that makes the district what it is. This thing's here, I mean, you folks, the way you carried yourself. And then to be able to sit there, this is the fun part about the job. You have to read this stuff as opposed to some of the other things that cross our desk. That's the best part about it. That's why we do it every day. So thank you. The board doesn't do much.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kessner?
Yes.
Mr. Sturrock?
Yes. I would like to add one more motion. If somebody would like, since you're pending retirement, if somebody had liked to nominate perhaps one of our new board members, Mr. Tancer, to take over this position for next year, he's here.
That's not on the agenda, Mr. Wilson. You can't just, really, really.
I tried. We'll talk to him in January, Barry. Congratulations. Okay, recognition of the committee to support Canfield Schools.
Well, this is going to be enjoyable for me and I'm sure the board as well. This started back a few months ago and I guess it started off with community forums, a couple of them. And part of those community forums, we needed chairs of a levy campaign. And I'm not going to allow you to talk about this now, Leo, because I heard this about 30 times. So I'll tell the story this time. During one of the forums, desperately needed to show the community that, not only show them, but actually get behind the words that we were stating, the rhetoric, conversation, that it was going to be a community-driven campaign. And without involving board, which I'm sure was very difficult to maybe allow this to happen, I know it's central office to allow community members to chair co-chair committee. But DePurley stepped forward because I think Leo was put on the spot one evening and was basically announced as the chair of the campaign. And I think it was actually mentioned that he was a co-chair, which at the time, we didn't know who the other co-chair was going to be. But luckily, Robin stepped forward and said, "I guess I can pull a little bit of time together and help out." I don't think she realized how much time was going to be involved. But years ago in the district, there was a Cardinal Award. And that Cardinal Award was usually given to above and beyond duties for the district. Unselfish acts, acts that were not paid for, that people stepped forward and did special for the district. And I think it's only appropriate to bring that award back. It's been some years since the last award was given. And the folks that we'd like to recognize tonight definitely deserve all of our thanks. Co-chairs of the committee, Leo and Robin, time that they took away from their family, time that they added to the new family, as we said, when we got together and met weekly and sometimes a couple times a week. It just, it lent itself to, it was a job, but it was an enjoyable job. It was time together with folks that really cared for the school system, that cared for the community as a whole, that cared for what we recognize tonight in outstanding students. And I'd like to introduce them tonight. And I don't know if they have anything to say or if the board would definitely want to say something to them. But Leo and Robin chaired our campaign. To their left, Ken and Dana, again, little ones at home, often finding babysitters to take care of their little ones, to come to meetings, giving time away from their family. Can't thank them enough. They were on the social committee, and I don't mean getting together individually ourselves, but going into homes and having social gatherings, coffees, meetings with community members. And they definitely had Marcy Muckleroy to thank for that. And Marcy chaired that social committee. And what a great job she did there, lassoing people that wanted to have functions in their home and gatherings. Yeah, and I said, yeah, thanks a lot there, Marcy, for all those times, two, three times a night. Next to Marcy is Julie. Julie helped out with day-to-day, but again, organizing and helping out PTO and getting them involved and making sure that that communication was shared through the PTO as well. To Marcy's right, Jeff Barone helped out and chaired the sign committee. I think we all noticed the signs as we drove through the community and saw how they brightened up the community. It wasn't just a levy campaign. It was bringing that pride into the school system and bringing it and having it shine. And I think the signs did that. In front of Jeff, you can't miss him, Dick Duffett. Cardinal through and through, a community member, an alum that gave his heart and soul with the Communication Committee. What an outstanding job they did in making sure they got the message out in many different avenues. So I can't thank him enough. And Jackie. Jackie Duda worked on door-to-door campaign. We started that several weeks before the door-to-door campaign, handing out literature, getting the precincts, knowing the streets, knowing the homes we needed to go to. Again, she had pieces of paper laid out on this table many different evenings, plotting where we were going to go and helped organize Saturday prior to the levy vote. It was just a great gathering here. And I do have to mention with that day, Marcy's husband Todd actually helped organize students' involvement in it. And that was great to see and having so many students involved in the campaign. Not asked, they asked to be a part of it, which was outstanding. So guys, you know, I don't want to be tacky and not have enough, but I do have several and I think the ladies should be the first ones to receive it. Guys will take care of you later on. But yeah, bringing back the Cardinal Award. It's a lapel pin of a Cardinal head and it came through the heart. You know, I really, I can't say enough about these folks and what they did for the school system and did for the community. So thank you very much. Leo?
Can I just add a comment to that?
Sure.
Just one committee member that's not here tonight, Kristy Durham, who was in charge of our fundraising, who made sure we had the capital to pull all this off. So she did a tremendous amount of work and effort. And also, for those of you that haven't been here, you had a very tireless superintendent working side by side with every committee as necessary to get this done. So you had, you know, your top guy making sure he did everything. He didn't sit back. So as much work to you, Alex. And I think we're probably glad we don't have to hear each other speak for a while, huh?
We can recite it for you easily by the time it was done. So again, please, round of applause for that.
While you're passing that out, I would like to read an email I got from Mr. Jordan this morning that says, "Just got the word from Board of Elections. It is official. After counting the provisional ballots this morning, we have officially won the levy campaign. We actually picked up votes with the final total showing a victory by 53 votes. No recount will be necessary and now we can say we won." Thank you again for all your efforts in supporting this much-needed issue. I think that 53, I've heard a number of people say, "Well, that was close." They don't realize that everybody worked hard to turn 1,000 votes from no to yes. So the 53 was effectively a landslide. Thank you very, very much.
I'd just like to add, on behalf of every student that walks through the door of Canfield Schools, on behalf of every teacher at Canfield Schools, on behalf of all the administration at Canfield Schools, we cannot thank you enough. You have done a minor miracle, and I'll get choked up, but I just want to say, thank you for every one of those people. So the next time you drive past a school and you see kids entering that school, that's a thank you for every one of those children. Because now we can do things that we couldn't do before for those children. And we can give our teachers the equipment they need to better themselves for those children. So thank you so very, very much. Every day. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, another group that was quietly working behind the scenes that we were allowed to talk now about, whatever they want are the principals of the district. If you want to let the kids go, you're the boss.
You know, maybe after the principals, they might want to hear what's going on in their buildings.
How many you have homework tonight?
Oh, they don't. Try that again. How many you have homework?
Why don't we start with? Let's start with the middle school. Ladies, how are you going to divide it?
We already have three divided. We'll start with building management and staff. You just hit it on the head. The feeling within our schools of realized pride, we can't even say what it feels like to be in there right now. People are starting to see the potential that we knew was there. It's the most amazing feeling and in the kids, you can feel it everywhere. So we just want to say that it's outstanding to see. Mike Karinski, he seems to come up every board meeting. Jason Jugenheimer did an outstanding job. For those of you that saw our Veterans Day program, I don't think that there was a dry eye in the place. I've been in other school districts and seen great performances and this was by far the best I've ever seen and we were very proud of our kids. All staff have been provided with in-service on surfaces, document cameras and projectors. And we've received some great feedback on that. So we know that that's going to continue to get better and improve. Like you said, we're going to be able to equip our staff with some more things that they need in order to instruct our kids.
I'm going to touch on the curriculum and data piece in our middle school building. We've continued to meet with our grade levels bi-weekly to dissect data, to discuss student concerns. And we have meetings with the teachers to address any curricular concerns then as well. Our value-added data just came out. For those of you that know about value-added data, it's a compilation of three years' data on student achievement by teacher. So we've dissected that. There are five different levels and we see growth among, I'd say 95 or more percent of our teachers at the middle school from last year. This is last year's data, so you know, from 2012 to 2013. We also are happy to announce that the Straight A grant has moved around too. And I'm sure you'll be hearing more from the other principals on that as well. But we worked diligently and relentlessly in pursuit of this. So we're very, very excited about that. And today, we had a staff meeting after school as we do every month now. And our entire staff had an in-service on writing professional growth plans and how that relates to OTES.
As far as stakeholder communication, we still are sending the e-newsletter out weekly. Please email me if you're not on that list and would like to be. And students, you're welcome to be a part of that too. We would encourage that. We send a quarterly newsletter home from the middle school, which was attached to your packet. We had our second coffee with the principal at the middle school last Friday. And that was, we love that because the parents can come in, ask us questions about relevant issues. And we found that that two-way dialogue has really cleared up a lot of misconception and people are starting to really feel like they're welcome to come in. So we love that. Parent-teacher conferences, we have tomorrow night as well as Monday. Tomorrow night, grades five and six from three to nine. And Monday is grade seven, eight from three to nine. Today, the Communication Committee, this is the committee that's not separate from what the Levy Committee was. This is going to be our ongoing communication and marketing to promote all of the amazing things that are happening in our district. And believe me, just from being a part of helping with that newsletter, I'm discovering all of these neat things as well. So we also have some things that we're going to be rolling out in the near future. So I'm going to keep you on the edge of your seat. I don't want to give you too much right now. But we're looking at other ways to really reach out to the different parts of our community, whether it's school age, parents, or other pieces that possibly.
The Teaching and Learning Committee, which I had, is working on vertical alignment, which means that in grades K through eight specifically right now, we're going to get on the same page with how we teach, with the process of teaching reading and math, and align our curriculum as well. So students aren't wasting time learning different styles and techniques from year to year. Expectations will be, of course, guided by the standards, but the process and how that's achieved will be similar. Again, Mara mentioned the Veterans Day program. I'm not just saying this because they're our kids, but it was amazing. The amount of pride. One of our children's dads is a major and a surgeon in the military and he spoke of his experiences and the family connections that were made. I get goosebumps on my face because it was just, it was amazing to see. So we have to say something about that. And again, Jugenheimer and Karinski are in charge of Operation Christmas Carol in our building. So they are working diligently to connect needy families with grade levels and staff members who are willing to adopt these families. And I'll tell you what, when that delivery happens, when the day comes where all of this is gathered, come by the middle school because it is amazing to see the pride and the kids who gave freely to those who couldn't afford. We also have information on DC Went Home. Our DC trip is at the end of May this year, so it won't interfere with our OAAs at all. Sixth grade teachers will be taking their kids to see the Nutcracker. It's the first time they've been on a field trip in a while in sixth grade. Our Special Education Christmas Party is December 6th at Amron Lanes. It's amazing. If you haven't been there, it's a real treat to go. And our book fair is coming up as well on the weekend.
And just to piggyback, I'm sorry, I'm off the mount, turn here. But what she was saying about Mike Karinski and Jason Jugenheimer, we have so many teachers in our building that do things on their own time, above and beyond. And every day, we realize that more and more and we just want to make everybody here aware of how proud we are of that.
That's Jermaine reporting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't you have any more time to do anything else?
We can do whatever you want, Mr. Wilson. We got more if you want us to. That was the abbreviated version.
I'll tell you what, let's see if Mr. Maldivan can match that.
For you, anything. Thank you. Been in a lot of school districts in my career and there's nothing like being in the school the day after the levy passes. The smiles by the kids, by everybody, the teachers and everybody. And I'm sure Mr. Tulley will talk some more about this. But we would also like to thank everyone for all their efforts. It was just phenomenal, fantastic, tremendous. Excited about that. In the high school, what did we, what happened recently? We had OTT makeups, OTT tests, Ohio graduation tests. Those were all completed a couple of weeks ago. These were for kids who needed to pass them. We did have a few and we felt that went very, very well. We ended our fall sports season and now we're preparing for the winter sports season. And it's hard to believe that basketball is just around the corner. I think we got our first girls game here next weekend. So it'll be very, very interesting to see how that works. The middle school talked about their Veterans Day observation. And I would also like to comment about our Veterans Day observation. And I took the liberty when I came in to put on the board, behind the school board members, that's Canfield Local Schools website. If you go to that site and click it and go to the link that says, Channel 201, Canfield Schools Cable Television, click Video on Demand and you'll see our CHS Veterans Day presentation for the school. I would echo the thoughts of Tracy and Mara about there's not a dry eye in the school after you watch this. And we do, Mr. George puts this on and passed. Ms. Dove, who is a retired teacher, really helped with this. And what you see is you see a tribute to the veterans. But what's really neat about it is you will see actual recent graduates of Canfield High School in their military guard in there. A lot of times, they're in Afghanistan. They're all over the place. You'll see teachers, parents, who are up there. And we try to make Veterans Day a connection, a personal connection. If you do anything when you go home tonight or tomorrow, go to that site, click it and watch it because it is just absolutely phenomenal. It's tremendous. It was just great. What else is going on? Our band, you know, what makes Canfield so great? It's unbelievable. We got the best district in the world, the best we feel it, the best high school. Any guys in the band? Who's in the band? Look at that. Where are you going this week?
Chicago.
They're going to Chicago because they're going to march in a Thanksgiving, kind of a prep, I guess it's called, preparation for Thanksgiving. Opens the shopping season. They're going to walk down the Miracle Mile. And I'm sure bring your checkbooks because there's a lot of things to buy in the Miracle Mile. That's for sure. And they're also going to, it's a shame Mr. Hamilton's not going because they're going to eat at Gino's East Pizza, the best pizza in Chicago without question. to eat at Gino's East Pizza, the best pizza in Chicago without question. But again, our band, they're phenomenal, they do a great job. They really represent us very, very well. This, last Tuesday, on 11/19/13, Mr. Fry, this is for you. That was the 150th anniversary of the Gettysburg Address by Abraham Lincoln. Not many schools dealt a lot with that, but we felt the need to do that and we actually read the Gettysburg Address over the loudspeaker to the whole school and we kind of emphasized that. 150 years, that's the Gettysburg Address. As I told the kids, how long was it? Do you remember what I said on the loudspeaker?
It was two minutes long.
Two minutes long, okay? And it's the most famous speech in the history of the country. Just two minutes, guys, that's all it was. But it's just very, very interesting. We thought that was great.
You got two and then he got me.
How many of you were at the play this weekend? Anybody go see the play? How about The Music Man? Went Friday night, really enjoyed it. I was on one of the wings, three rows from the back because that's how full it was. They had tremendous crowds. Any of you guys in the play? No play people? Okay, sorry. But Dr. Becky Hakenin, who is our guidance counselor, is magnificent. The time and effort that her and Kelly Scourge put into these plays is phenomenal. It's what makes Canfield the best district there is in the world. Mr. Tullio?
Boy, that's a hard act to talk about.
How'd I do, Mr.? Which one? You got three in front of you.
Now, you're really trying to prove yourself, aren't you? But that's okay, you know, we're up for it. I'd just like to echo and really the committee that worked on the levy. I know Mr. Maldovan mentioned about the, the day after the election, when you walked into the building, the energy that you could feel going around the building and I'll tell you what, Mr. Fry, you summed it up perfectly and we're just excited at the high school. We're ready to run, I'll tell you what. I think at times the superintendent's probably going to have to put a lasso around us and pull us back a little bit because some of the things we'd like to do. It's really a result of what this committee really worked hard for. Let's see, our conferences are going to be held on the 26th. We have that all organized. It's a great evening and in fact, we have to go around and to conclusion of it at, they chase parents out because they want to stay there and talk with the staff and it's a great, great experience to walk through the building. Waiver day will be on December the 2nd. There'll be no classes that day, but we'll make sure that you all get homework. Don't miss out on anything there. The Straight A fund was mentioned by the middle school and I have to tell you that the high school applied for one. I hate to say too much about it because I hate to jinx us, but out of 570 schools that apply, we're told that over a third of them didn't make it through the first round. So, Mr. Hamilton, you're the math teacher, okay? And these 200 stu-, or 200 applications didn't make it through the first round. So, there's about 370 that we still have to compete against. We feel very confident about our proposal at the high school. Great thing about that proposal, it was all teacher-driven. I had a great committee. Mr. Conley put together a group of teachers we had talked about. He put a group of teachers together that worked with me. They didn't work with me. I worked with them, I'll tell you. It was Mr. Conley, Kevin Oops, Dr. H. Gretchen Sprague, Mr. Strohhecker, Mr. Pennington and Mr. Haladi. And I'll tell you what, we worked hard for about four days. We really put a lot of time and effort into the proposal. I have to also acknowledge Mr. Vito because it had to be put up on the CCIP, so he typed everything in for us, in fact, for all of the schools, if you believe. So, he really spent some time, I'm sure, sitting at his computer typing in all of these proposals. And the other person that has to go out, the other person that has to go out, if you just bear with me, okay, is Patty. I tell you, when it comes to budget times and what she can do for us, it's phenomenal. We have a real gem in our treasure and I think we really owe her a round of applause. If we don't get this grant the first time, we should get feedback, we'll step up the bat and try for the second round and that's up to $150 million, they said. But we will work towards that. If we don't receive any monies whatsoever, I have a commitment from the staff that's willing to really work hard for the students at Canfield High School. We're going to do some things a little differently, even without the grant and we're really excited about that. It's just that positive energy they give from that committee, helping us pass that levy, getting it passed for us. You can't say no. Thank you. And that should end my time.
I'd like to ask one question of you. Didn't we have a rather special visitor recently with regard to the Cardinal Cafe?
Yes, we did. And thank you for bringing that up. I know it's on your sheet and I overlooked it, but our Cardinal Cafe, we had the vice president of the corporation from Fruit Blotting from Arizona actually flew in for our grand opening. And thanks to Mrs. English, helped us get out the word out. We had a number of news people there. The corporation has actually asked for more information and pictures of the grand opening because they're going to send that out through their national medias. So, really quick Canfield on the map and the kids are having a great time with it. If you're hungry in the morning, stop by, pick up a sandwich. Tom Phillips special, okay? Mr. Phillips, we have to commend Mr. Phillips. He heard that we needed a refrigerator and he went right out and purchased a brand-new refrigerator for us, delivered it to the school, added-delivered and the kids named one of their sandwiches after him, so it's great. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Business Journal covered it too. I didn't know if, I only had seen it in the Cryer and then I just got a copy of the Business Journal.
Mr. Moroney, they offer food at the high school.
Wow, yeah. You know anything cooked by my students, I'm going to assure you that. I may get some bonus things in your food. On behalf of the Hilltop staff and students, I want to thank Mr. George and congratulate Mr. George, the Board of Education, in our levy campaign. We are really excited about all the kindergarten next year and can't wait to start those discussions and see how that's going to look at our elementary level. I know that's a big thing for our community to have that available to our students and we are really looking forward to that come 2014, 2015 school year. Some building management staff development issues at Hilltop. Our teachers will participate in guided reading training on December 2nd. Mrs. Young will be working with our staff on many issues related to guided reading, balanced framework. Our teachers will also be taking part in some classroom visits to area school districts, to look at school districts that are using guided reading, balanced framework, LLI and a lot of the issues that we're looking into here. Mr. Lowery and I had the opportunity this morning to go to Aurora Schools. We were at Craddock Elementary School and we saw a really outstanding program involving the reading recovery and in a classroom with guided reading and really excited about it. We want to see that program come to Canfield and put that in place here. It's going to really benefit our kids who are struggling readers and then take the kids who are very good readers to the next level. So, we're excited about the things that we saw this morning. Curriculum data, our teachers spent time in October, November reviewing two reading series. Each, Rayla completed a review of each of these series and turned it into the Teaching and Learning Committee headed by Mrs. Hochstetler. We want to pick the best reading series for our kids and get those materials into the hands of our teachers. Our fall OAAs data will be released this Friday. We're looking forward to seeing how well our students did and then taking that data and moving those kids forward from there. In the area of students, our report cards were sent home on Friday, November 8th. We want to congratulate the 44th, 3rd and 4th grade students who had all As on their report cards and achieved high honor roll and the 119 students in 3rd and 4th grade who received honor roll, that's all As and Bs. They each received a certificate and their names are posted on a wall outside of the office for parents to see when they come in for conferences tomorrow night. Our STEM Week was held during the week of November 4th. Our students participated in hands-on activities related to science, technology, engineering and mathematics. Some really neat activity put together by our STEM committee and the parents who were involved with that. And I want to thank our PTL and our STEM committee for all the hard work that they did to put into that. I did provide board members with a copy of the Vindicator article and passed it out over if you didn't get one. I think I left extra copies on the table. Really nice article written by Kaylee Hall of the Vindicator. She came in, she interviewed our students, she interviewed parents and it really made our school look good. So, I want to thank the Vindicator for their coverage of our STEM Week. As I said in the article, I want this to be the model for other schools to do. When other schools look at how do we start STEM at an elementary school level, I want them to say, go look at what Hilltop does. And I think we're well on the path to be that model. Career Day was held Friday, November 15th. Community members met with our Hilltop students and talked to them about what they did for a living. They did demonstrations and we had the cake lady there who decorated cake and gave, Mr. Jordan, I forgot to invite you that once here. All of our students got some sample icing and the cake lady provided all of our teachers with a little sample, so we appreciated that. I want to thank Diane Dankovich, our guidance counselor, for coordinating Career Day and all the parents in the activities that go with it. I'm on the Facilities Commission for the strategic plan. We are meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. We're going to do some touring of the buildings. We had previously collected information from principals and maintenance staff on the needs of each building. So, tomorrow we're going to do a building tour of all the buildings in the district to see what those needs are, look at the security needs, building needs, maintenance needs, things along that line. So, that'll be tomorrow morning. Everybody just touched my reminder that we will be coming through tomorrow morning. Some upcoming events at Hilltop. Parent-teacher conferences will be held tomorrow night, Thursday, November 21st and again on Monday, November 25th from 4:00 to 7:00. It's a great time for parents to come in and check on the progress of their student at this point in the year. Our fall fundraiser pickup will be tomorrow night also from 4:00 to 7:00. We will be having a hall tonight to remind our parents to pick stuff up. Some of it needs refrigerated, so if it doesn't get picked up, we have to send it back or it starts to smell pretty funny after a couple of minutes. Also have our birthday book sale. It's an opportunity for kids to come in and buy, purchase books to provide for our library. They get to be the first student to check it out. Their name goes in there and gets stamped, so anytime anybody checks it out after that, they know who provided the book to the library, that they were the first child to check it out. The money raised from our birthday book will go to provide 21st century technology for our students. Some fun things coming up this Friday, November 22nd is Brown Steelers Day. We're encouraging our students to dress in their favorite NFL gear, Cleveland brass, or if they're not a fan of any NFL team, to wear red and black to show their Cardinal pride. Tuesday will be Ohio State and that other team day, just for the upcoming game this weekend. So, some fun things we have coming into our holiday break, there are kids involved as well as kids. Our Hilltop 2nd graders will be singing at the Canfield Tree Lighting on Friday, December 6th. That takes place between 6:00 and 6:30. Us along with CH Campbell and the middle school will be singing some holiday carols and things along that line at the lighting of the tree on the green. Our Santa's Workshop will be held on December 12th and 13th. This gives our kids an opportunity to buy holiday gifts for their family and friends. It's kind of neat, I remember that when my kids were little, to get some of the little trinkets and stuff that they bought at Santa's Workshop. It always, I stopped getting Christmas presents after they left elementary school, so we're looking forward to that. And then finally, our 2nd graders have their annual holiday program on Tuesday, December 17th. There are three showings of that at 10:00, 2:00 and 7:00 PM in the Hilltop Gymnasium. Everyone is invited to attend. I do have two more things real quick. Two community service projects that we have our kids involved with. One is Toys for Tots. We're asking kids to bring in a new unwrapped gift. We're working along with the Marine Corps Reserves to collect toys for local children who are in need at this time of the year. And then we are also participating in the Coins for Kids program for Akron Children's Hospital. So, again, we're looking forward to that. Hilltop has been the top-performing school in Mahoning County, not elementary, but the top-performing school in Mahoning County for the previous three years and we hope to continue that this year. Thank you.
That's a great segue into Mr. Lowery as to why CH isn't.
May I interject?
Oh, you may. Mr. Moroney?
On behalf of a person who was born and raised in the city of Pittsburgh, I want to thank you for 99.9% of your comments.
I had no comment back.
I must have mistaken that.
You asked a question, the, why we are not the top-performing school. Well, Mr. Moroney did misspeak. Last year, CH was the top-performing school.
We had a DJ and a lot of fun that day.
You had it last year, the year before, two years. Okay. Anyway, moving on, a lot of what Mr. Moroney said, I would just echo. Him and I worked very closely together to try to align a lot of the different events that occur actually throughout both of the schools so that they are doing a lot of the same things. Before I move forward anymore, I would just like to say a giant thank you to the levy campaign. I worked with them through a lot of the different door-to-door campaigns and a lot of the other opportunities that we had to get involved. And as a member of the community, it was really nice to see the pride start coming out in not only the community members, but the children, the staff, everybody. It was an amazing thing to witness. Watching this process two years ago, it definitely looked nothing like that. So, thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Jordan and the board, for giving them the opportunity to step up as they did. So, it was very good and thank you very much. Moving forward, we also had a Veterans Day assembly and a program and thank you, Mr. Maldovan, for putting the directions up on the board up there. If you follow numbers one through three, you can get to the CH Campbell presentation as well. So, you can go right onto the Canfield Local Schools website and you can take a look at what we had on there as well for ours. Our assembly involved, I need to definitely thank Mr. Fay, our new music teacher. He organized the entire event. We had a musical program put on by our 2nd grade students. After that, they put on a skit as to what Veterans Day actually is and we had one of our parents, Mr. Russell Haddon. He is a chief warrant officer in the United States Army, come in and talk to our students about service and what it means to serve in our country. So, it was a very wonderful program and I have to thank Mr. Fay for organizing that and putting it all together. Aside from that, we also had our, well, not also, we had our 2nd grade grandparents' day program this past month and what a success it was. We had over 200 grandparents in the halls of CH Campbell Elementary School. We had a musical presentation for them as well, put on by our 2nd grade students. After that, they moved down to classroom presentations. They went on a tour of our lifelong ago museum and I have to add the air quotes to that because some of it was from my childhood, so I'd like to think that wasn't that long ago. But that being said, to them Atari is very, very old, so that's okay. And cassette tapes and CDs and everything else. But moving forward, after that tour of the lifelong ago museum, there was a presentation for them. They did some interviews with them about their past and what life was like as they were growing up and going through school and it ended with a round of bowling in our gymnasium where the grandparents got to go in and bowl with their grandchildren. It was quite the sight to behold. And again, if you follow steps one through three, we are going to have something placed on there. I do not believe it is placed on there yet. It's still being worked on, but it will be on there in the near future. So, a very wonderful presentation and I was very proud that it went as well as it did. Today was a very exciting day at CH Campbell. In addition to our book fair that's been going on for just over a week now, we had our inflatable bounce-around cardie, which is quite a sight to see if you ever go through it. Will be in the upcoming newsletter that's going to be going out there. There'll be some pictures in there for you. But three giant inflatable were brought into the school. We had a crawl-through that the kids could go through. We had a bouncy house that they could bounce around in and an obstacle course that they all enjoyed. So, it was a wonderful day. We had no injuries, no major ones, which is definitely a good thing. But that being said, this was their reward for all the hard work that they put in with our cookie dough fundraiser. And I cannot say enough good about our children and this cookie dough fundraiser that they put on and the parent involvement for them going out and getting cookie dough sold to so many people. Our school sold over $54,000 in cookie dough, bringing in $24,000 to our school, which can be used to upgrade technology. Nowhere else that I have ever been can I say that I've seen community involvement like Nowhere else that I have ever been can I say that I've seen community involvement like that, selling anything, let alone cookie dough. So that being said, we were very, very proud of them and definitely want to reward them for all of their hard work. We also have parent-teacher conferences coming up on Thursday and Monday. We had a candy drive after Halloween. This is the second year that we've done this, benefiting the Mahoning County Rescue Mission, where parents are able to get rid of some of that unwanted candy so that the students don't not only eat their bags, but also all of the leftover candy that they may have. So they collected bags and bags full of candy that got donated, and they were very, very appreciative for that donation. Our PTO has organized that two years in a row now, and it's been a very positive experience. Our staff is also, like Mr. Maroni's, was working on our new reading curriculums and submitting that recommendations for what they thought about the new curriculums that we are starting to look at. They will be continuing that process throughout a large chunk of this year. In addition to those, we had our teachers working on their reading improvement and monitoring plans. And these are individual plans written for students that may be reading below grade level in reading at this time. So if they're below grade level, we target them and we actually write up a plan for them to help them improve and show how by the end of the year, we can start closing that gap and get them on grade level. That plan is going to be communicated with all of our parents at conferences and handed to them, and we'll work with them to make sure that we're providing the students with as much reading instruction and intervention as we can to get them on grade level. We also have our teachers working on the professional growth plans. We have our OAA data coming out on Friday as well. Again, we are very excited to see that from our fall test. And the fall OAA test, it's important to realize, measures what they should know by the time they leave third grade. And we're consistently looking at over 90% of our students passing it in the fall, which is very impressive to know that our kindergarten, first grade, and second grade students and teachers have worked so hard that they're at that point entering into third grade. It's very impressive. Mrs. Hawkinsmith was in charge of our book fair and has been organizing that. The theme for this year is turning our library into an oasis, and she even dressed up with some of her best Egyptian garb for the event. It has been a lot of fun. The students have really been enjoying it. We also, Mr. Maroni and I, worked on a straight A fund grant along with Mrs. Haas Stettler and Mrs. Banfield. And again, we're looking for a similar opportunity for the elementary levels that they're looking at, at the middle school level. And if we were to move forward to the next round, and again, we need to really thank Mrs. Haas Stettler and Mrs. Banfield for their help and support throughout that process, but also Mrs. Kestner for all the hard work that she put in as well. We definitely could not have done it without any of their help. So thank you all. Also, some other things. Again, went on the tour today, which was very beneficial. Our fourth grade is going to be...our fourth grade is going to be singing in the lighting of the green ceremony. Mr. Maroni will have his second grade there. We are also going to be doing Toys for Tots, and we will give you a run for your money in Coins for Kids.
I'm organizing my house.
We'll see how. But that's all I have for you. Again, I can echo everything else that Mr. Maroni has said today. So thank you all very much for your time.
If you don't mind, before we dismiss folks, I just want to mention, I don't know of another district in the state of Ohio that has every building still involved in a straight A fund. No one. Every one of our buildings are to the next level. No one in the rest of the state can say that. So that's something to say about each and every one of our building levels.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask each of you principals to take back congratulations from the board to each of your teachers and staff, because I know what you're doing is reporting the events, and I know it takes the entire building to do this. And believe me, as a salesman, I somehow can't turn down a second grader coming to the door selling cookie dough. I'm into three figures, no question. But thank you all. We will offer you, for those of you who don't have homework, you're welcome to stay. For those of you who have just received homework in the last five minutes, you're now welcome to go. Principals, you may leave as well, because I think you've got to be here tomorrow night, Monday night, Tuesday night, and so on and so forth. Thank you very much for your presentations to your students. Thank you.
It was our pleasure.
How you doing?
Thank you so much.
I know, but it was fun.
Oh, yeah.
Your support. Good. How about you? Are you...
Thank you.
I'm in Chippewa.
We have all of our stuff this morning. I told him I could be there after 7:00. He's like, "I'm going to be out here."
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Maybe after Christmas, we'll go out and do that, just so we can like be normal.
We had like...
You did more than just...
I didn't see...
I think the last few guys bounced, so finally got it.
That's a promise.
It worked.
That was good.
Tell me what you want.
Yeah, I heard.
You have an impression.
I have a impression.
My wife would go to the stadium.
I hope you're welcome.
Thanks for all your work.
Well, how about the...
I know.
I know.
It worked.
Honestly.
Oh, that was good.
Tell me what you want.
I know.
Yeah, I heard.
You have an impression.
I have a impression.
Yeah, I know.
I have an impression.
I know.
I have an impression.
I know.
I have an impression.
I know.
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 Yeah, we all work together. We all work together. Well, we appreciate you coming. Richie is a great introduction. You know, I think he could introduce me. So, wonderful. He's a good guy.
All the time you have a very important family. But Steve is pretty polite. I just imagine he has a bad...
Thank you, sir.
Steve has had a ball with the visitors. I think he'll pay for the levy. I think he'll pay for the ball for ten minutes. And don't forget your wife.
Hey, no, very good. I love you too. I can't even tell you when I said I loved you.
You want to say?
No, no.
Andrew, it's a...
I know. I know. I can't say goodbye. I know. I can't say goodbye.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'll miss Steve.
It's a nice day.
See Mr. Goman? Tomorrow night, we got a meeting. Hi Barry, how are you? I didn't recognize you first with your hair.
You're going to be sure that was as long as you've been since nineteen eighty-eight.
That one's there in the room. Looks good. Hey Barry, before January... I have a six-thirty meeting debrief here for the committee. So, I should be there by then.
I will be there seven thirty, seven forty-five. What about yours particularly?
Yes, yes. This weekend or next weekend, though? Part of that wrestling address.
Uh, this weekend. First service next week. It's moved up on the list.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Who's the new kid?
Yeah. Guys, why don't you come over and join us?
Yeah, there's... Not many people get that seat. I want you to know, Barry, not many people get that seat right there. You know him or something? I mean, real?
Yeah.
He usually just tries to get a man away from him a little bit.
Hey, beautiful campaign, by the way. Very nice looking.
I loved his science.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, Craig, I've heard about him in Wirecard. He gave me a okay. He's been in the office. He takes the ones over here.
Right, thank you. As is tradition with this board, we will not read the minutes. However, they are available online. Should anyone who's left in the audience like to see them?
I'm looking up, please.
Yeah, please do. But I will ask for a motion to accept the minutes of the October sixteenth regular meeting?
Don't move.
And the November sixth especially.
Don't move.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any comments? It's going to fly now. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes, Mr. Olson.
Yes. Treasure report. Make it quick.
Yeah.
This is you. I know.
Check frame, register page one, third of the way down. Kindergarten library, thirty-one thousand dollars. This was some title one, arena supplies. Page two, middle of the page. Barrikas construction, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. It's a payment on a middle school construction project.
Is that all paid now?
No, that was the first payment. There are some change orders and this was the only payment.
And those monies did come out of?
Permanent, permanent.
Thank you.
All the way. Any questions on any checks? Appropriation report. Thirty-three percent of the year's passed. Thirty-five percent of our payrolls we paid. And we're at about thirty-seven percent. So, we are on target at this point of the year. I do have one amendment for the Fund Twenty-Two, the OHSA Tournament Fund, to ask for permission to establish this fund and receive it from the auditor's office. This is right now, just to handle the soccer tournaments. Not sure if there will be additional tournaments later on in the year. If there is, then we'll be amending this again. But we'll need a motion to approve that for forty-five hundred dollars. We can wait till the end and do that all together. Purchase orders, page ten, start the new items you haven't seen. And I'd like to, one correction on page fifteen, decimal place along, despite the gravar electric, six hundred and eight thousand, it's one hundred and eight dollars. So, that's been corrected. Cuses aren't quite that expensive. Any questions on any purchase orders? Then the investment report.
The tournament fund thing, is that if they get so far or something? And that's...
Is any OHSA tournaments that we hold here host them? Whether we're participating in them or not?
Oh, okay. If we host them, okay.
And if these were the girls' and boys' soccer tournaments that we did participate in?
Right. Okay.
For first round. Investments, nothing new. Just see later on the agenda. I am requesting permission to open a brokerage CD account at Farmers. And also this fund, Home Savings, has approached me and they'd like to become a depository. They are once again accepting public funds. And so, I'd like to do that also because they'll be able to bid on investments. So, working on trying to diversify the investment portfolio and get additional quotes, especially since we're going to have new money coming in next year.
Would you remind us of our current depositories, please, that we've approved in the past?
Well, there's only two and only one active one that I'm using, which is Farmers.
And who was the second one we approved?
I think Chase was on there. We did get investment quotes from that at one point.
Are you asking for Home Savings now?
No, they have to send in a request, which is, they're working on now. James Long is over at the church. Called me yesterday and asked for permission. I don't know if they will do it before me. So, but Farmers is waiting to, they had some really good rates on some CDs, but they told me I had to wait until they had permission from the board to set that brokerage CD account. So, the auditor's request, so...
So, are you looking for permission from us tonight?
That's an agenda line I would like to lay along.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's take care of this appropriations amendment. I'd ask for a motion to establish the OSHA Tournament Fund.
Some of...
And approve, you want to do it all at once? Yeah, do, and approve all the reports.
Okay, and we will approve the various financial reports for November.
Some of the second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yeah.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Yes. Anybody sign up for comments? Now that we cleared the room. Did you, either one of you gentlemen, sign up? Okay, number five. Okay, new business, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend personnel resignation, licensed employee Leslie Butler. CHS English teacher, effective January twenty, two thousand and fourteen, for the purpose of retirement. That's your Exhibit One A. Would you like to have those, all of those written or take care of those individually? Read them all. Also resignation classified employee Joe Pavlikovic. CBMS afternoon custodian, effective January one, fourteen, for the purpose of retirement. That's your Exhibit Two A. Melissa Sackler. CH Campbell, kindergarten daycare aide, effective November four, thirteen, other employment. That's your Exhibit Two B. Take care of resignations.
Okay. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent, I entertain a motion to accept the resignations of Leslie Butler, Joe Pavlikovic, and Melissa Sackler.
Some of...
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend for hire classified employee Lori Schindel. CH Campbell, kindergarten daycare aide, three and three-quarter hours per day at twelve dollars, eighty-one cents per hour, effective twenty-first of November, two thousand and thirteen. That's your Exhibit Three A.
Upon the recommendation, Superintendent, I would ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Lori Schindel.
Some of...
Second. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
I'd also recommend for hiring extracurricular activities, Exhibit Five C. We have middle school wrestling coach, this is a correction. Steven Pitts, two-plus years experience, thirty-four oh one. Nonlicensed employees, extracurricular, resolutions fifty, two thousand and fourteen. JV softball coach, point-five time. Joseph Patura, seventeen oh one. Again, JV softball coach, point-five time. Joe Mazerick, seventeen oh one. And a volunteer softball coach, Mike Cook, at no wage.
What was the, I'm sorry, upon the recommendation, Superintendent, I would ask for a motion to hire middle school wrestling coach, two JV softball coaches, a volunteer softball coach.
Some of...
Second. I have a question. What was the correction, first of all, on Steven Pitts?
Went from the inexperience to the experienced level.
Two-plus years.
Yeah, he had experience.
I didn't get it to great in time. He coached before.
So, he's really that experienced now?
He really is, actually.
Well, we'll blame you. Don't worry about it.
That's okay. So, it was my fault.
One comment I would like to make, as I have had some conversation with some people regarding some of the softball coaching staff, and I am just going to make sure that Mr. Cooper has handled that. There's some concern, but I believe our policy is that the coach can hire whoever he or she would like in conjunction with discussion with Mr. Cooper. Am I correct?
They definitely have an opportunity to recommend with our athletic department. We have Mr. Cooper heading that, definitely, and then conversation with building level administration, then to central office, and obviously on airplane for hiring.
So, they've reached this point and they are recommended all the way up?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes. Mrs. Kestner, top five here? You keep making this smaller.
Sorry.
No, it's your eyes.
Yeah, you know, this is the forecast that was filed for the October thirty-first deadline. It does not have the new levy passage reflected. It still needs approved because it's the one that was posted at ODB. But just to reiterate, you know, you can see line six point oh one, all the red numbers. That's our deficit spending, three years of actual and this five years projected out. So, now we will have black numbers in there going forward. A lot needs updated on this now as we plan the all-day kindergarten, the busing changes, the technology upgrades, the security upgrades, although some of that will be done out of PI fund, some will also be out of general fund. Expenses, there's no salary changes. Nothing's been negotiated at this point. The only benefit changes, ten percent increases in healthcare are projected. Also, the participate revenue on line one point oh six is going to have to come out of there in the future. So, we'll be working on those changes as we move forward. Any questions?
When would you expect to have, you know, to include all this in a projection?
Well, I mean, I could put some of it in now. I hate to put just the levy in without the cost of running expenses.
No, no, realistically, when would you?
Well, it depends as we plan and, you know, the all-day kindergarten, is it going to be five, six, the number of teachers?
It depends on enrollment there.
Whether there's going to be attrition or, you know, other areas where there might be excess classroom teachers, so...
Be nice to get rid of the red. Okay, on the recommendation of Superintendent, I will ask for a motion to approve the annual forecast filed October thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Some of... I think there's a move over here.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Second. Any?
Sorry, I didn't hear the move.
Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Archer?
Yes, I'd like to present to the board. We did approve bids to go out for a dump truck at the last meeting. We did advertise and three companies did take out the specs for this dump truck. We did open bids this afternoon at noon. There was only one company that actually bid for this dump truck. Their bid was from Chuck and Bob, Bob and Chuck, Eddie Chrysler Dodge Jeep, and their bid was for this one-ton dump truck diesel with a V plow. Their bid was forty-nine thousand, eight hundred, fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And that's very close to what we really anticipated going into this. We thought it would be right around fifty thousand dollars. And it was right around fifty thousand dollars. Remembering two, the reason, one of the reasons for this is we have to have another vehicle for plowing snow. We've been very lucky so far. The big blue monster over there that we've had plow snow has been down. We did get another part that we had to get specialty, specialized made, and it did come in today, so they're hoping to get that back up. But that thing is, that vehicle is so old, we can't get parts for it, and it's not as dependable as we would like it. One of these days, we may be calling Mr. Jordan and saying, well, wait a minute, it's going to be difficult to open school if we don't have another vehicle. So, this is critical to, in our opinion, to get going on and get it in our fleet so that we can plow snow and get ready for the winter season that's coming up and have schools ready to open. So, my recommendation would be for the board to approve Bob and Chuck, Eddie, one-ton steel bedded dump truck diesel with a Myers snow plow, V plow, for forty-nine thousand, eight hundred, fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
On the recommendation of business manager, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the one-ton dump truck snow plow combination.
Some of...
Second. Second question, do we have an issue with diesel? Do we have diesel over there? Diesel fuel?
Yes. Oh, yes. All the buses are diesel.
Oh, they are?
The new pickup truck we got about two years ago is diesel. Most of the fleet is diesel. The only thing that's not really diesel are the vans. We have four vans that are still gasoline, and that's why we have the small gasoline tank that you see above ground out there.
Is there a reason in your mind the other people didn't turn a bid back in?
You know, I tried to make some calls this afternoon and couldn't get ahold of the people that I wanted to, but I'm going to explore that because, you know, and we'll talk about this in the next one. We've looked at and we've gone out to actually get people. I actually took specs to people, not waited for them to call and ask for them. I took them out.
Why's that?
Because I wanted to have a competitive bid.
But you wanted to make sure you handed it to somebody?
I wanted to make sure that it was in the hands of the people that would either say, yeah, we're interested, or no, we're not interested. And even that only got us one bid. I gave the board some information about the buses and the bids on that. It is what it is, folks. I do think this is a good deal. I think that it will be a very good vehicle for us to have in our fleet to be able to do what we need to do with it.
Does the board have a policy on how many bids? Is there anything that the board has?
There is a policy on how we bid and how we advertise for bidding.
Okay.
But there is no minimum...
Number of bids.
Number of bids that we have to have in order for the board to accept it.
Is it cheaper to buy a dump truck by the chassis and then by the other part later on and then by the plow later on, too?
Well, if this were July, I would say that probably is a pretty good idea. But unfortunately, it's November, and this blue truck down here is going to pot. Every time that we take it out, something else happens to it. And again, we had to get a specialized piece for this thing that it can't be made. So, Phil, I think if it were July, it would be a different story. It's now November, end of the week, we're supposed to get possibly some snow. We bit the bullet about a week ago, and the red truck was enough to push some snow because we didn't really get a lot, so...
Yeah, the red truck's twenty years old. When was the last time we bought a dump truck?
We have, well, it was the big blue, which we bought probably eleven years ago. And that big blue dump truck is wonderful for the high school in the back of the high school lead when you have that total area back there, you can plow, and that thing will plow and push snow like crazy. But it's not dependable. That's the issue with that truck. They don't, you know, we were thinking about trading it in, but we don't want to trade it in because it has a good purpose in a heavy snow. It can really wipe that snow out in that high school park. These smaller plows are much better for CH and Hilltop and around in the areas that we have here.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right, roll call, please, on the purchase. Although you mentioned buses, we're just going to deal with number three right now, which is the bid of the dump truck.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Olson?
Yes. Now, on to the buses.
We talked a little bit about the buses. I, we had a special meeting, what, a week, week and a half ago? We did talk about the bids. Mr. Jordan, if you want to pass those out. It's just a summary, folks, of what I think you've already seen. I did go and look at some comparisons. When you look at the Ohio School Council, which is a consortium of Cleveland schools and of other schools in our area, they bid buses out for this consortium. And I wanted to get some idea of how, how many bids do they actually get when they do this? They start in January and they open them in May. And they haven't had much better luck than what we have had in getting more bids. They had three bids, Bluebird and, as you can see, they had Bluebird, they had Thomas, and they had International. And International does not make a transit type plus anymore. So, they had basically two bids. And as you can see there, the bid that won for the transit bus was ninety-three thousand dollars. If you're looking at what we're looking at, we were talking about, we're talking about our bid from our local vendor of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars for those buses. So, you know, would we like to have more bids? Yes. Did we get them? No. Do I think we have a fair bid from our folks down here? Yes, I do. I think they did a pretty good job in bidding that out for us. Remembering two, that it's going to take six to seven months to get any new buses. So, we need to be thinking about that. I'd like to, you know, I know this has been a long meeting, but I would like to go into one other thing. And Craig, I think you and Dan had a discussion later, at the end of last week or so. I just want to bring up one other item. About three weeks or so ago, you probably saw in the paper and on the news that Austintown was in the news with one of their buses. And the Highway Patrol pulled a bus over because it, in their mind, was either overloaded or something was sticking out into the aisle of the bus. You cannot do that. Dan and I have been talking about this. We've talked to people down in Columbus. We've talked to the Highway Patrol. If any part of your body is out past the protective seat in front of you, that's a violation. So, to put Barry and I in one of those seats, that's about all you're going to get. To put Barry and I and Dean in a seat, Dean's going to be hanging out, which is a violation, which they're looking at very closely in our area and in other areas throughout the state. So, if we had a bus full of people that were eighth graders and high schoolers, you're only going to get forty-eight kids on that bus that are within...
That's what seventy-eight passengers, what it's classified as?
Seventy-one or seventy-two passenger. But you're only going to get forty-eight. There are twenty, there are twenty-four seats in there, and you're going to get two people to a seat. So, this is going to impact our thinking as we move forward, I guess is what I really want you to be thinking about. You know, before, if we were on that seat, we were okay. But the Highway Patrol is coming down very hard on the safety end, and it makes sense. You've got that, you've got that seat in front of you that's padded, that if you had to stop, you're going to hit that. If Barry's hanging out at the seat, he's going to go flying down the aisle. It all makes sense, but it has huge implications to us as we start to look at expanding our busing.
Do you know what else is going on? What's going to be the result of that in Austintown? Do you know?
Yes. What I've been told is the bus driver was fined. Since the bus supervisor knew about it, she was fined. And as it goes up the line, if I knew about it, I would be fined. And if Mr. Jordan knew about it, he would be fined. So, it can go that far. I don't think it's going to reach you guys, but it's going to go up to Mr. Jordan and myself.
Was it a transfer, was it transporting school kids or was it transporting sporting team?
I think it was a daily run, Brian. I think it was during the day, so it was a daily run. It wasn't a supports, a sport activity.
So, it wasn't on eleven? By eleven?
I don't think so. I think it was in the city. I don't know exactly where it was, but we have been seeing, well, actually, drivers have been reporting to us, holy smoke, there is a Highway Patrol car following my bus. And that's good. That's okay. Nothing wrong with that. But it's going to have implications as we move forward in this busing. And that's the biggest thing that I want the board to understand.
Do you expect to have additional conversation with Danny Richards about how this is going to impact our full busing in September?
Dan and I have been talking about that. I think we need to have a work session where we can sit down as a board and administrative team and look at that. Dan has had meetings with his drivers after this Austintown thing to make sure that they are aware. And they're very nervous because they know that they could be fined if they were pulled over and it happened to them. Now, another question was wifi buses. We've had to get rid of three, at least three of our buses because they could no longer pass inspection. Some of the board up here, most of the board, I think, have seen pictures of what our guys do with these buses. I mean, they tear them apart from the wheels up and the supports underneath. Some of the buses that we had were not going to pass inspection. So, we're looking at five to help supplement what we have and to move forward with any kind of increase in busing.
Well, when you are ready, Mr. Bovin, I started that process with you and Dan. So, you call a meeting, we continue that process because we are going to, you know, re-implement full busing in September. So, we need to do whatever it's going to take to do that.
And I'd like to say to you, five buses will do it. I'd like to be able to say that, but that's not what I'm saying to you tonight.
I understand.
These five buses are going to be important to add to our fleet. But as we move forward with the plan, there may be a point in time where we need to rethink if that's enough buses.
You mentioned, when we purchased that one bus the last time already, you made mention of the fact that this was a leased bus. We got it for seventy-nine thousand. Are there other buses out there that have been canceled as a result of, you know, boards not passing levies or things like that that could save us some dollars?
You can always go into used buses. And we have done that in some cases, but you are buying other people's stuff.
Well, used was four thousand miles. That's different under what you talked already.
Yeah, that was, it was under four thousand miles. Haven't had any of, haven't heard of any of those, Craig, at this point in time. But as we move forward, and really, Mr. Jordan, I don't know if we're planning a work...
And again, we had to get a specialized piece for this thing that it can't be made. So Phil, I think if it were July, it would be a different story. It's now November, end of the week, we're supposed to get possibly some snow. We bit the bullet about a week ago and the red truck was enough to push some snow because we didn't really get a lot. So.
Yeah, the dump truck's 20 years old.
When was the last time we bought a dump truck?
We have, well, it was the big blue, which we bought probably, probably 11 years ago. And that big blue dump truck is wonderful for the high school in the back of the high school. When you have that total area back there, you can plow and that thing will plow and push snow like crazy. But it's not dependable. That's, that's the issue with that truck. They don't, you know, we were thinking about trading it in, but we don't want to trade it in because it has a good purpose in a heavy snow. It can really wipe that snow out in that, in that high school park. These smaller plows are much better for CH and Hilltop and around in the areas that we have here.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, roll call please on the purchase. Although you mentioned buses, we're just going to deal with number three right now, which is the bid of the dump truck.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern? Yes, Mr. Olson?
Yes. Now on to the buses.
We talked a little bit about the buses. I, we had a special meeting, what, a week, week and a half ago. We did talk about the bids. Mr. Jordan, if you want to pass those out. It's just a summary focus of what I think you've already seen. I did go and look at some comparisons. When you look at the Ohio School Council, which is a consortium of Cleveland schools and of other schools in our area, they bid buses out for this consortium. And I wanted to get some idea of how, how many bids do they actually get when they do this? They start in January and they open them in May. And they haven't had much better luck than, than what we have had in, in getting more bids. They had three bids, Bluebird and, as you can see, they had Bluebird, they had Thomas and they had an International. And International does not make a Transit Type Plus anymore. So they had basically two bids. And as you can see there, the bid that won for the Transit bus was $93,000. If you're looking at what we're looking at, we were talking about, we're talking about our bid from our local vendor of $87,271 for those buses. So, you know, would we like to have more bids? Yes. Did we get them? No. Do I think we have a fair bid from our folks down here? Yes, I do. I think they did a pretty good job in, in bidding that, that out for us. Remembering too, that it's going to take six to seven months to get any new buses. So we need to be thinking about that. I'd like to, you know, I know this has been a long meeting, but I would like to go into one other thing. And Craig, I think you and Dan had a discussion later, at the end of last week or so. Just want to bring up one other item. About three weeks or so ago, you probably saw in the paper and on the news that Austintown was in the news with one of their buses. And the Highway Patrol pulled a bus over because it, in their mind, was either overloaded or something was sticking out into the aisle of the bus. You cannot do that. Dan and I have been, been talking about this. We've talked to people down in Columbus. We've talked to the Highway Patrol. If any part of your body is out past the protective seat in front of you, that's a violation. So to put Barry and I in one of those seats, that's about all you're going to get. To put Barry and I and Dean in a seat, Dean's going to be hanging out, which is a violation, which they're looking at very closely in our area and in other areas throughout the state. So if, if we had a bus full of people that were eighth graders and high schoolers, you're only going to get 48 kids on that bus that are within.
That's what, 78 passengers, what it's classified as?
71 or 72 passenger. But you're only going to get 48. There are 20, there are 24 seats in there and you're going to get two people to a seat. So this is going to impact our thinking as we move forward, I guess is what I really want you to be thinking about. You know, before, if, if we were on that seat, we were okay. But the Highway Patrol is coming down very hard on the safety end. And it makes sense. You've got that, you've got that seat in front of you that's padded, that if you had to stop, you're going to hit that. If Barry's hanging out of the seat, he's going to go flying down the, the aisle. It all makes sense, but it has huge implications to us as we start to look at expanding our busing.
Do you know what else is going on? What's going to be the result of that in Austintown? Do you know?
Uh, yes. What I've been told is the bus driver was fined. Since the bus supervisor knew about it, she was fined. And as it goes up the line, if I knew about it, I would be fined. And if Mr. Jordan knew about it, he would be fined. So it can go that far. I don't think it's going to reach you guys, but it's going to go up to Mr. Jordan and myself.
Was it a, was it transporting school kids or was it transporting sporting team?
I think it was a, a daily run, Ryan. I think it was during the day, so it was, it was a daily run. It wasn't a supports, a sport activity.
So it wasn't on 11, by 11?
I don't think so. I think it was in the city. I, I don't know exactly where it was, but we have been seeing, well, actually, we, drivers have been reporting to us, holy smoke, there is a Highway Patrol car following my bus. And that's good. That's okay. Nothing wrong with that. But it's going to have implications as we move forward in this busing. And that's the biggest thing that I want the board to understand.
Do you expect to have additional conversation with Danny Richards about how this is going to impact our full busing in September?
Dan and I have been talking about that. I think we need to have a work session where we can sit down as a board and administrative team and, and look at that. Dan has had meetings with his drivers after this Austintown thing to make sure that they are aware. And they're very nervous because they know that they could, could be fined if, if they were pulled over and it happened to them. Now, another question was wifi buses. We've had to get rid of three, at least three of our buses because they could no longer pass inspection. Some of the board up here, most of the board, I think, have seen pictures of what our guys do with these buses. I mean, they tear them apart from, from the wheels up and the supports underneath. Some of the buses that we had were not going to pass inspection. So we're looking at five to help supplement what we have and to move forward with any kind of increase in busing.
Well, when you are ready, Mr. Bovin, I started that process with you and Dan. So you call a meeting, we continue that process because we are going to, you know, re-implement full busing in September. So we need to do whatever it's going to take to do that.
And I'd like to say to you, five buses will do it. I'd like to be able to say that. But that's not what I'm saying to you tonight. These five buses are going to be important to add to our fleet. But as we move forward with the plan, there may be a point in time where we need to rethink if that's enough buses.
You mentioned, when we purchased that one bus the last time already, you made mention of the fact that this was a leased bus. We got it for $79,000. Are there other buses out there that have been canceled as a result of, you know, boards not passing levies or things like that that could save us some dollars?
You can always go into used buses and we have done that in some cases. But you are buying other people's stuff.
Well, used was 4,000 miles. That's different under what you talked already.
Yeah, that was, it was under 4,000 miles. Haven't had any of, haven't heard of any of those, Craig, at this point in time. But as we move forward, and really, Mr. Jordan, I don't know if we're planning a, a work session here in January with new board and the board that we currently have, but I think it would be important to have some discussion on this and move forward with the entire board so everyone understands the concept and, and how this is going to affect.
Before we do that, I would like the four of us to get together, you, Dan, Phil and myself, as we started that and, you know, kind of have some of this discussion about the direction we're going.
One of the issues is certainly for, for us is how many kids are really going to be riding that bus? You know, Dan now has a roster on that bus and that roster may have 65 students on it, but only 40 ride. And, you know, that's the part that Dan has to look into his crystal ball and say, whoa, wait a minute. If every one of those kids rode that night, we may have some kids sticking out in the aisle. And we've got to be very, very much aware of that now.
And I realize those implications as to whether we make an adjustment with the elementary schools, you know, keep them separate, put them together, whatever. There's going to be a lot of different things that impact.
There'll be a lot of dialogue that takes place.
Okay, I, on behalf of Mr. Archer's recommendation, I will ask for a motion to accept the bid for four buses, which would make a total of five.
That amount was $87,271 each for four buses. Motion?
Sound move.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, discussion?
Just one thing, Rich. Quite by accident, Lee and I went to Bluebird bus down in, uh, Columbus, PA, and we asked why they had not bid. And they did not know why. So I got a phone call a couple of days ago, maybe three or four days ago, from the salesman. And he told me why they didn't bid. He said, we're not in the habit of bidding where we know we're never going to get the, we're never going to get the job. And I said, what do you mean? He said, well, because the specs are for a Thomas built bus. And I think you've inherited that. I don't think that was you. I think that's something that's been done for years and years and years. And I'm just wondering if that's exactly what we want to do because we are limiting competition. However, the price is good, you know, and I asked about the price and that's a good price at $87,000.
Phil, I will remind you, in, in our past, in our most recent past, when we bid buses, we did not get a Thomas. We got International buses. So even though that might say, and I'll double check that and look at that. It, you can bid a Bluebird, you can bid an International if they make it, you can bid a Thomas. And as you, you heard earlier, International bid some buses that weren't actually meeting our specs. So bids can go beyond what the specs are or under what the specs are as far as presenting a bid to this, to this Board of Education. But I appreciate that.
He pointed out several things like the headroom was bid out at 78 inches, the Bluebird bus is 77 inches, can't meet that spec. He talked about the battery compartment. Battery compartment for the one bus is so many inches. For his bus is different. And he said, I can't meet that. And it was just a small, small degrees here. And I'm thinking, you know, we're, we're actually, we're limiting, limiting it to the Thomas built bus and eliminating the Bluebird. Now, I don't care if we buy one or the other, but I'd like to have, you know, just the competition. And again, you inherited that.
True.
What I would say is, is that if Rich is saying that we're going to accept a, for lack of a better term, a below standard bid.
Or variation in, in a spec, which we did when we bought the International buses.
And we had the rusting or the, wasn't there one bus that we had that we had some issues with?
We had what?
Wasn't there one bus we had that we did have some issues with, Rich? Back in, maybe not?
It's a very nebulous statement.
I know. The rusting. I thought the rusting issues.
But at the end of the day, it's, it's up to us to accept the variations in the bids. So I'd be interested to see whether or not Bluebird is actually just not interested and they're using those particular bid standards to back out gracefully. It's my idea.
I think what Phil was saying is they're not going to waste their time putting a bid in when they're pretty sure they're, they're not going to get the bid.
I mean, so in that case, Rich, come up and say, look, this is what, this is what's transpired and, and look, we're, we're very interested in, in the best price for the, the best bus. And if you choose not to bid, then that's undone.
Boardman has all Bluebirds. Again, I mean, I'm not going to profess to know the, the, the better bus between International, Bluebird or Thomas. There's only two makers that I know of, but I don't think International really makes their own bus.
I don't think they do either.
More engines, aren't they?
No, the, the engines and transmissions are pretty much the same. They really are. Yeah.
So you can look into it. You can look into it.
It's all Bluebird or they are.
Contact Bluebird and see what they're saying.
But right now, we need four buses.
Right.
We need four buses.
Superintendent, sir, do you have anything to add since this is a future board amendment? No?
Okay.
So I mean, if you could contact and get back to us what they said next board meeting, that'd be great.
It sounds like we may be still continuing to research this.
Well, depending on where we go with this, folks, yes.
We are going to go with full busing in September as stated, you know, as one of the reasons we passed the levy. So whatever it takes.
Right. Is, is the issue.
Right.
I guess at the end of the day, this discussion is about the four buses and whether or not Bluebird might be interested and maybe need a clarification or clarifying call from you.
Good thing. Thanks, Phil.
This is basically, that's separate of all this. We need four buses.
No, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes. I, let me congratulate this board for stepping up immediately after the passage of the levy and taking care of the first item that we said we would do. And this is certainly a big step towards bringing back busing by purchasing five buses within the last two weeks. Mr. Archer, thank you.
Thank you.
I will, I think, entertain a motion for the second reading of the changes in the bylaws and policies. And this should be the final reading with the passage of this. It will enact these adjustments to our bylaws and policies as stated in the last set of minutes and in your agenda in front of you.
Sound move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
I'd like to amend, to, I'd like to ask for approval of out of state overnight field trips. Wrestling teams, Newcastle, PA, in order to participate in Sky Hill Run. Monday, December 23rd of 13, exhibit 7A. Wrestling seniors to DePoise, PA, Saturday, November 23 and 24 of 13. In order to participate in senior wrestling retreat, providing transportation and lodging are covered by an outside organization. That's your exhibit 7B. Wrestling team to Perry, Ohio, Friday, January 3 and 4 of 14. In order to participate in Perry-Penn City Tournament, providing transportation and lodging are covered by an outside organization. Exhibit 7C. Wrestling team to Akron, Ohio, Friday, January 17, 18 and 14. In order to participate in a DICE Wrestling Tournament, providing transportation and lodging are covered by an outside organization. And middle school wrestling team to Twinsburg, Ohio, Friday, January 31 and February 1st of 14. In order to participate in Twinsburg Athletic Boosters Wrestling Tournament, providing transportation and lodging are covered by an outside organization. Exhibit 7E.
Well, now we know why Mr. Conley's here tonight.
No, I, I, I should.
We're just thankful we got these in ahead of time.
Yeah, you're right.
On the recommendation of the superintendent, I will entertain a motion to approve items 6A through 6E regarding out of state and overnight, in or overnight field trips.
Sound move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Wait a minute, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I've expressed concern before about overnight trips and I've seen a few that were disasters. And I just wonder, are, is everything in place? I keep saying this. Is everything in place? Does everybody know when they go on an overnight trip, what's expected of the kids? What's expected of the supervisors, et cetera, et cetera? It just scares the hell out of me because, you know, something could happen.
I couldn't speak directly about these, some of the trips that Coach Conley has.
I'm not talking about those. You know, I, I know Coach.
Well, yeah, because my son was there and I know how the parents act as far as his program's concerned. It's wonderful.
Because I was there for Ben.
So what are you talking about specifically?
I just want to know, is there training for all the suit, all the people who are going to supervise? Do they know? I mean, and do we have somebody signing off saying, yeah, this has been done, this has been done?
We have a checklist. We have expectations. We have a policy on that. Not only the advisors of those organizations, booster members, it's, 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 it's our people having to make sure that these individuals who go with them to help supervise have the qualifications and certifications that need to have be in place. Whether it be a BCI, FBI check, whatever that is, we have a checklist that they have to go through. So that's, that's where we're at with it. It's not something that we take lightly. Our advisors that are, that head these organizations, head these groups, feel very strong that supervising our youngsters away from their parents, it's a big responsibility. They don't take that lightly at all.
So you feel very comfortable?
I am. I am.
And that is who we hold responsible?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Recommend you accept the donations. That's your exhibit number eight. And that total is $19,488.26.
On the recommendation of superintendent, I will ask for a motion to accept the November 2013 donations totaling $19,488.26.
Sound move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
I recommend the amend the list of parent districts support organizations for the 13, 14 school year to include Canfield Robotics Booster Club. This would be in addition.
Before we take a motion on that, should we, at this point, adjust that organization to include the, what was it? The baseball? No. What was the thing I shared?
The, no, softball boosters.
Softball boosters who apparently, based on what I read, will be turned back over to the school? Yeah. Should we do that now or you want to deal with that next one?
We're going to make sure that we amend adding the robotics.
Okay. All right. On the recommendation of superintendent, we will entertain a motion to amend the list of parent district support organizations to include Canfield Robotics.
Sound move. Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kestner?
Yes, um, just request permission to open this brokerage CD account at Farmers?
Describe the brokerage CD.
It's actually going to be just a separate account to allow them to purchase CDs from instead of what they have. Some money transferred into this account and CDs will be purchased. I would not be purchasing over the term.
There'd be no other purchases other than CDs?
CDs at this point are pending, yes. That's all.
Brokerage account in my role is a lot more.
Right, that's, that's why we put a CD attached to it. It would only be just purchase of CDs. And we're not mixing to a big amount.
What do they feel the benefit of that is?
Um, I believe it's just a requirement that they have to distribute a separate account.
Fees associated with it? You know, brokerage money is there. Who's, who's holding the brokerage account? Who's the custodian of the brokerage account?
It is Sierra and I think there's, I, I don't know if it's the, actually. But I would be purchasing CDs only. I wouldn't transfer money into that account until.
But CDs that are owned or held by who? Because you're going into a brokerage account, it's going to be another custodian.
It's another, another bank.
Another firm. It's a, it's a firm. It's a clearinghouse. Well, there's a, no, there's a clearinghouse involved if it's a brokerage account. If it's the standard industry brokerage account. Yeah, there's a, there's a clearinghouse like National, Financial or, not necessarily. I'm just kind of curious to know more about it to make sure that there's not fees associated with it or that somebody's, somebody's intent isn't to try and steer it into more, you know, different investments, mutual bonds or stocks or what have you. But typically there is, you know, a fee associated maintenance with the brokerage account.
I'll double check before.
Yeah, that's something new at Farmers National. That's, that's for certain.
So their, their investment, you know, is this separate, I believe, it's like a separate entity.
They took it over and put it on their investment side instead of their banking side. That's what they did. Those banks that didn't have an investment side offered CDs for years and years now. You know, why suddenly does it have to be a brokerage account? I think only because they've separated it would be my guess. So.
Patty, based on, based on your discussion, you still okay to go ahead with this?
I, I mean, I think so unless she has some concerns.
Well, we're giving permission to open a brokerage CD. I mean, I, I guess I ask Mrs. Kestner just to inquire a little bit further as to why that has to be moved into a brokerage to purchase a CD. You know, what, what, what's their structure that they feel it's necessary to do that?
Okay, upon the recommendation of the treasurer, I'd like a motion to open a brokerage CD account at Farmers National Bank.
Sound move. Second.
Additional questions or comments?
Sorry, I don't have time.
No, that's, that's fine. No, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Recommend to adopt the resolution 14, 2014, amending resolution 1214, declaring transportation impractical to listed schools. That's your exhibit number nine.
On the recommendation of superintendent, I will ask for a motion to adopt a resolution 14-214, listing St. Paul School and Islamic Academy of Youngstown as schools that are impractical for us to transport.
Sound move.
Second, please.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
I just wonder how you, how you come to that decision. I mean, I could see why, but is there any criteria?
Distance comes into play, the amount of youngsters that we transport to those. There's also the amount of time. It's not just distance, but it's time.
I was just curious.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes. No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your earlier reports. Mr. Jordan?
Just want to highlight a few things. Again, the straight A grants, I can't say enough of the efforts and Patty as well. I mean, this first stage of the straight A grant, this first round was sustainability. If we were going to be able to reduce the five-year forecast of the burden on the general fund with this grant, with her help and the administrative team, along with teaching staff, really assisted in this. And I, I can't say enough about the efforts behind it. Really appreciate it. Thanksgiving holiday, Bambi Day, which is our December 2nd, that's our waiver day. I'm sure a lot of our kids will go out and hunt on that day.
That's a mean.
Hey, it's Bambi Day.
This is a civilized area.
Hey, this is a city. Believe me, I'm sure they're not going to do it here, but they will do it elsewhere.
The answer is yes.
But that day, our staff will be working on that day. And again, the guided reading framework is going to be discussed, turning point, lighting grader. All of those good instructional practices are going to be taking place. And we, we just scratched the surface about if we're going to state we're going to want to be the top 10 by 2017. Again, we're, we are not opposed of going to visit and having conversations with other districts. We started it today. We're going to have other district personnel go, staff and district visitation, English Language Arts and Mathematics this year. So really looking forward to that. We've had dialogue with our central office staff, even down at OSBA. We're going to get there. And we're not opposed of bringing what's been successful elsewhere into our district. Kiwanis, I want to recognize them because December- that has to be moved into a brokerage to purchase a CD. You know, what, what, what's their structure that they feel it's necessary to do that?
Okay, upon the recommendation of the treasurer, I'd like a motion to open a brokerage CD account at Farmers National Bank.
Sound move.
Second.
Additional questions or comments?
Sorry, I couldn't.
No, that's, that's fine. No, thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes. Let me congratulate this board for stepping up immediately after the passage of the levy and taking care of the first item that we said we would do. And this is certainly a big step towards bringing back busing by purchasing five buses within the last, uh, two weeks. Mr. Archer, thank you.
It is, thank you.
I will, uh, I think entertain a motion for the second reading of the changes in the bylaws and policies, and this should be the final reading with the passage of this. It will enact these adjustments to our bylaws and policies as stated in the last set of minutes and in your, um, agenda in front of you.
Sound move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Kestner?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
No comment.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your earlier reports. Uh, Mr. Jordan?
Just wanna highlight a few things. Again, the Straight A Grant, I can't say enough of the efforts, Patty as well. I mean, this first stage of the Straight A Grant, this first round was sustainability, um, if we were going to be able to reduce the five-year forecast, the burden on the general fund with this grant, um, with her help and the administrative team, um, along with teaching staff, really assisted in this, and I, I can't say enough about the efforts behind it. Really appreciated. Thanksgiving holiday, um, Bambi Day, which is our December second, that's our waiver day, um, I'm sure a lot of our kids will go out and hunt on that day.
That's a mean.
Hey, that's Bambi Day.
This is a civilized area. This is a city.
Believe me, I'm sure they're not gonna do it here, but they will do it elsewhere. But that day, our staff will be working on that day, and again, the guided reading framework is gonna be discussed, Turning Point, Lightning Greater, all of those, uh, good instructional practices are gonna be taking place. And we, we just scratched the surface about if we're gonna state we're gonna wanna be the top ten by two thousand seventeen. Again, we're, we are not opposed of going to visit and having conversations with other[1667.01]